Was gonna bring it, I was like.
Yep, you're rolling.
All right, good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the eighth day of September two thousand twenty-five. Can't talk this morning. We'll begin our meeting this morning with an opening prayer offered by Commissioner Blake. And following his prayer, we'll have we'll have Sam Woodall, our attorney, lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this morning, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as citizens of Iron County. We're grateful for the moisture that thou has provided us with recently and ask that that it will keep coming, that our aquifers might be filled. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve in our communities and ask that the Spirit will be with us today as we discuss the needs of the county and bless us as we make decisions that they will be in the best interest of our of our citizens. Father, we're grateful for our freedoms and pray for our military, our first responders, that they'll be kept safe. We're thankful for all of the blessings that we receive in living here and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead with approval of our minutes dated August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there any discussion on the minutes? entertain a motion.
I gotta climb up and get my mic back.
Uh, let's see. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for August twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now we'll go ahead and approve our claims for payment from August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five through September seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll move for approval of our claims for payment from August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five to September seventh of two thousand twenty-five.
Second that.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. We'll go ahead and go to our departmental reports. We'll start with our auditor. Lucas Little.
Okay, good morning, commissioners and members of the public. I first want to address the recent fraud charges of a former Iron County employee that was part of the building department. In the spring, we received an anonymous tip that was sent through the state auditor's office. Upon reviewing the details from the tip and the financial transactions of the building department, we discovered several payments dating back to two thousand eighteen that were never deposited. These findings were turned over to the State Bureau of Investigation and charges have now been filed by the Iron County Attorney's Office. Public funds are held in the highest regard, and this finding has not been taken lightly. Since then, we have reviewed the process for each department in the county that handles money and are implementing additional checks and balances where needed. As in this case, fraud is often discovered through whistleblowers, and I want to publicly thank whoever reported this. As a reminder, we do have a fine have a fraud hotline on the county website where information can be can be submitted anonymously. And that's on our county website under the Auditor's Department. So we welcome any tips anytime through there. In our office, we are going through the Board of Equalization process right now. The deadline for that is next Monday. That's where the property owners can appeal their values. This year, we have had quite a few less appeals already up through this point. So we're pretty low on that significantly this year, which is a good sign. Means our assessor's office is a lot closer to values where they should be. And we're not having to go through so many appeals. We are also taking abatement applications for property tax abatements for low income and indigent individuals. Those applications were due last week. So we're processing those, and now that tax rates are final after the school district district did their truth in taxation, we will be entering those into our tax system. Another thing on the abatements, you may remember last year, there was a bill that was ran by Senator Dan McKay trying to get rid of this program that would change all of those to more of a deferral program where people could still apply, but it would defer their property taxes. That would be kept track of and interest applied, I think, two or three percent interest rate. And then, once that person passed and their home was sold, then their children or whoever inherited their home would have to pay those back taxes. So I had a meeting up at the state Capitol about two weeks ago with Senator McKay. Through UAC, we have a little panel that was put together discussing with him ideas and options. It looks like he's going to run another bill this year. Well, this coming year, I'm trying to get rid of the abatement again and do a deferral. We are, I mean, giving our input for the best program, I guess, possible. Overall, I'm still opposed to it. I think we should fight against this bill in in order to keep the abatement. There are several other treasurers, auditors throughout the state, commissioners that were up at this meeting that want to fight against it as well. This, yeah, the Governor Cox vetoed this bill. It did end up passing narrowly. So we'll see what the new bill looks like this coming year.
Hey Luke, can I just ask a question really quick before I forget? What's the what's the total here in Iron County? What's the abatement amount?
So we have about we have about three hundred people on it. How that affects, basically how it works is all other county residents pay a little extra since all of those people are getting this abatement.
Right.
It's if their income is under forty-two thousand and they're over a certain age, over sixty-five. So we have around three hundred people on it, and each citizen's paying somewhere around three to seven dollars extra per year to have this program. So taking it away really isn't going to save hardly anything for all of the other taxpayers. I mean, maybe five dollars a year for the average homeowner. But I do see it really hurting a lot of our citizens that are on this program. I mean, we have people come in that are just on social security. They're only making fifteen to twenty thousand a year. And I could really see this forcing them to maybe be on the street, lose their home, and attack cell eventually.
How do those numbers, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
How do those numbers compare to the veterans' abatement?
So our veterans' abatement, I think we have around seven hundred people on that. And the total amount of taxes abated, I think, is around a million dollars. And for the abatements, it's like three hundred thousand. So the veterans is about three times as many as as the indigent in the abatement program. So, I mean, it it is a good thing, good program that the state implemented to help people from being forced from their homes. And I can see this now forcing people from their homes again.
I do, I'm sorry, and I'm asking questions. I know the answers too, but who funds the circuit breaker abatement and who funds the veterans' abatement?
So the circuit breaker, we do get reimbursed partially through the state for half of it. And then the other half is the taxpayers paying a little extra on their their taxes. Veterans is all funded through local taxpayers, so we don't get refunded any from the state for the veterans' abatement.
So not only is it smaller, it it's the one that the state actually funds. I I bring that out because it seems a little bit disingenuous. I it because no one's saying, hey, let's get rid of the veterans' abatement. Let's turn that into a deferral, and nor should we.
And and he actually, in our last meeting we had two weeks ago, did mention that as well. So that's something.
Was it on his radar? Is that what he's looking at?
Yeah, he's looking at maybe including the veterans and moving that to a deferral only, like basically getting rid of both of them and just having a deferral option. He did talk about looking into changing, like, on your income tax return, having the veterans be able to receive some credit. So it's through income taxes rather than property tax. So there may be a change there as well. But, yeah, like I said, I I think there are some things we can put in place to kind of clamp down or put some more more guardrails on the abatement program. They, I mean, they believe there are some people taking advantage of it that shouldn't qualify for it. We really try to investigate and make sure people have all of their required information and documents to qualify. We do deny, we have denied several people already this year that were over the income limit that didn't qualify. So we do really police that well. So I think there there could be maybe an asset test put into place, like if somebody owns a bunch of land or a bunch of has a bunch of inheritance money where they couldn't qualify for this, where it truly is people that absolutely need it. Right now, the the qualifications are just income-based, whatever you earned that year in your income, not looking at your savings or inheritance or other land that you own. And maybe if we do that, I I doubt he would agree to to keep the program even with putting the those other guardrails on. But that's something, maybe we could talk with another senator about running a different bill for that. So if that does pass, I mean, I, in the next couple of years, I see a lot of people having a lot of hard time making it, so. So, yeah, that's something we're we're fighting against. I'm actually going up to UAC this afternoon. The next two days, we'll have meetings, and I think we're gonna discuss more on that with other counties and come up with a plan. Any comments or further questions on that?
No. Whatever we can do to help, we're on the, I think we're all on the same page as far as. And I mean, those people have taken care of us, the veterans, you know, folks that have come before us really have benefited society and and helped helped us be where we are today. We ought to take care of those folks.
Yeah, and the
crap.
And the, I mean, the low-income people like Utah, they're always talking about a homeless problem and see that making it worse.
Right. Yeah, seems a little a little hypocritical to, you know, we're we're mandated to to provide low-income housing and moderate-income housing and all of these things. And then it seems like this takes a swipe at those people that really are the ones that would benefit from that kind of a thing. Kind of just kicks the stool out from under those that are that are really our neediest, but but not, you know, not our our neediest that aren't homeless. You know, if we, if somebody's right at that level where they could end up on the street, and we should do what we can to help those people stay where they are, not kick the stool out from under them.
Well, Commissioner Blake makes a good point. We're mandated to provide low-income housing or affordable housing, I guess. And we we were way ahead of the curve. We passed the R four K ordinance, which which made a smaller lot, a cheaper lot. And but we we can't wave a wand and force developers to come in and use these tools we do. It's a free market. So we can't, you know, we can't force something to happen that that won't naturally happen. The free market controls housing, period.
Right.
And so that's, you know, it's a good point.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Luke.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, corrections. Shalom. Thank you.
Thank you, madam.
All right, good morning. I haven't received my overall budget status yet from Lucas for the for quarter three, so I'll keep you posted on that one. Our culinary mills are staying staying the same as our second quarter at a dollar nine. So we're we're proud that that's staying pretty level for us. Our daily population has gone down a little bit over quarter three. What I what I've been seeing happen is we have a lot of our inmates that go out on ankle monitors. That's something that we've seen a increase in, so our county population has gone down for quarter three.
Is that effective? I guess I'm kind of asking the sheriff and you, the both, that. I mean, that that seems, obviously, it's cheaper for the county. But.
You, I was like, you can talk on that, because I, I mean, it's it's effective.
Shalom's just happy to have him out of her jail.
It takes the liability off of us sitting in jail.
Right.
So repeat the the question for me, please.
She said, how the the population is down because there's been several released with ankle monitors. Does that create a lot of work for you and your deputies?
So far, it hasn't. It's hard to tell, you know, what the future holds. I've I've talked with other jurisdictions that hate inmates released on ankle monitors because it does create problems. But so far, here in Iron County, it hasn't created a real problem for us. But we'll have to wait and see, you know, the more more ankle monitors are that are out there, the more opportunity for abuse, cutting them off and violating, you know, the guidance of the court, you know, is is very real possibility. Though it can be, it could be a problem for us. So far, it hasn't been.
And it's a judge making that decision, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Not Shalom in the back room going, you're out of here.
I'm like, ankle monitor. I mean, kind of, Sam knows. Like, hey, what can we do with this guy? Just kidding. What do you see?
Sure, what do you want me to say?
From the county attorney's perspective.
What's the perspective from the attorney's office?
We're anxious to let people out if we can because it lends some credibility to the attorney's office. When we say we'd like them held without bail, it's because it's serious and they need to be held without bail. So we're trying to weigh that option more carefully because if they violate on ankle monitor, they can end up back in jail pretty easily. And so it seems like it's been a good tool. Yeah, if you find them, so sheriff's good at that.
Just find the monitor in a trash can and they're gone.
Yeah, we don't take, we won't haul the trash can in.
Yeah. Sorry, that that's
That was good.
Well, way down a dirt road, but I was just curious.
All right, I mean, there's there's obviously there's a potential for abuse, and like I say, in other jurisdictions, it has been abused in the past. So far, we've been pretty fortunate, and we'll just have to keep watching it and see, see what happens. I think the more you release on ankle monitors, the greater the potential for abuse is.
So how many do we currently have?
As far as county inmates?
Ankle monitors.
Oh, I don't know. I don't track. I don't track how many people are out on ankle monitor, but
Okay.
Where would we be able to find that number?
With our private information report, so Lieutenant Peterson would probably have access to all those numbers.
There you go.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good, because I I have a short report anyway, so that was a good question. Um, our work crew, the guy that runs our work crew, he's had some family emergencies, so our work crew numbers went down. This is usually his busiest time of the year, so I hope we didn't hurt the fair too bad with, um, he he was kind of a hit and miss with his team this year. A good thing to report is that we are at zero vacancies, so our retention has held true for quarter three, which is awesome. We have, we hired three new deputies. One of them, it's notable because I've never seen anybody, so if somebody comes to us from out of state and they're certified, they have to challenge post to say, I want to take the tests and basically come into with Utah certification. And we'll give them a hiring, a hiring bonus if they're able to do it, but I've never seen anybody test out of B C O, which is the Basic Corrections Officer Block, because Utah Corrections is, I mean, we're I think we're pretty stellar in the nation for our standards, but anyway, he was able to test out of it. He came to us from Arizona. He had retired in Arizona and tested out of B C O, and he's with us now, so we were really excited. He's kind of like, he's just, he is gung ho, so we're excited to have him with us. Our long-term leave, we've had a lot of military leave. We've, that's usually what happens in the summer. And then we've had three F M L A. Our projects that the jail plant or the sheriff complex planning is ongoing. I have four deputies in post right now, three deputies on F T O. And then there's some programming statistics there. We're really seeing some great things out of our programming. One thing that is gonna that we're concerned about right now is the Inside Out Dad program. So that's a program that Utah State University has been able to run for us. We have an awesome guy come that's named Ruben. He comes in and he comes in two days a week, and they're potentially cutting his funding right now. So we've been trying to write letters and trying to save that funding for that Inside Out Dad program because it's it's so beneficial for our inmates. But that is about it. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Shalom. Appreciate it.
All right, Sheriff, you up? Let's see, no parking rec next, sorry. But you can go, you go. Is it okay? I didn't, I I had my nose turned over. I had. We usually do it that way, but John's throwing throwing a curveball at us.
Good morning. Things haven't changed that much since I last reported, since it was about a month ago, so the the numbers aren't a whole lot different. We have had fourteen SWAT callouts so far this year to date. And we're continuing to use our four-man teams for task force arrests and to make sure we keep everybody safe. The drug task force, as always, is very, very active. You know, last time I reported, they had one arrest where they had seized drugs and over fifty-one guns. They just had another one the other day where they seized drugs and thirteen firearms. So we're seeing a lot of drug-related cases that also are involving firearms, which is always very concerning to us. But I think is, you know, more one more reason for the the positive effect of having an explosive detection dog here in in Iron County. As I reported last time, we're now a member of the Washington County Task Task Force Bomb Squad because of our explosive detection dog. And they have funded us for a second explosive detection dog, which will probably be picking up in January and then sending off to to be trained, but I think that that's going to be a real asset to the county. Under our stats there, again, the the number on the right is last year for the total year of two thousand twenty-four. And the number on the left is what we have so far year-to-date. So as you look at those numbers, you can see that we're already rapidly approaching, if we haven't already, surpassed a lot of the numbers from last year. Under current issues, right now, we don't really have anything that's burning. We've dealt with a lot of those things on when we were back in Washington, D.C. in May, and that has been very beneficial. It has resolved a lot of issues and whatnot. The one thing I I get questions on quite a bit is ICE and the two-eight-seven G program. Two-eight-seven G is a rule that's it's a ICE rule which President Trump has been pushing very diligently to try to get local law enforcement agencies to sign up for the two-eight-seven G program. We haven't done it yet, and it's not because we're not willing to work with ICE, but it's just because there's some requirements there that are pretty difficult. So ICE has two, uh, three different programs under two-eight-seven G. The first one is the gel program. And the gel program requires us to send deputies back to the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in Glencoe, Georgia for three weeks to be able to to get trained, to be able to do their gel program for them, which is pretty difficult for us because, first off, we don't have a lot of extra bed space. And then, secondly, that's that's a pretty long period of time to send deputies away that other deputies are going to have to cover those those shifts and whatnot. And about a year ago, I met with the U.S. Marshal Justin Martinez, who's the U.S. Marshal for the state of Utah, and three ICE agents. And at that time, we agreed that we would house ICE inmates. that we would house ICE inmates under the US Marshal's contract that we currently have. So, right now, at this particular point in time, I don't necessarily see a reason for us to, to push the two-eighty-seven G jail program. The second program is the two-eighty-seven G warrant program. That warrant program requires, uh, the deputies to do over forty hours of online training, to be able to get to that point. And we're still looking at that one to determine whether that's, uh, going to be a good one for us to do or not. And the third one is the ICE Task Force Program. I've already got two deputies on the US Marshal's, uh, Violent Felon Apprehension Team, VFAST. And a lot of those, uh, warrants that they're filling already answers the, the ICE requirement. So, again, I'm not, uh, I'm not, I'm a little bit reluctant to assign more deputies to another task force, which is mostly used down in Washington County, not here in Iron County. So we're ending up doing Washington County's work for them instead of our own work. So right now, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to, to jump into, uh, the two-eighty-seven G Task Force Program. If we saw that they were up here, uh, doing work, going after violent, uh, felons, then I would be more in tune with, with assigning deputies to that program, but we're, I, I'm a little bit cautious right now, you know, our, we, we need to, we need to manage our staffing levels and not give our deputies more overtime than what they're capable of doing, so. We, we just need to be careful with that. Under youth homes, this time, the, the number on the right is what I reported to you in July. And the number on the left is our current number. Uh, so, you know, uh, in basically a month, we've had eleven additional assaults, uh, seven additional runaways, uh, two additional sex offenses, two additional juvenile problems, and so on. The, the total number of hours has gone up from three hundred and forty-seven point eight hours in July to four hundred and thirty-one point three hours in, uh, currently. And our, the cost to the sheriff's office has gone up from twenty-six thousand eighty-five dollars to thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. As far as weeks of, of work for us, that's gone up from eight point six nine five weeks to ten point seven eight weeks. So as you can see, these youth homes is a drain on the sheriff's office. We are doing a lot of work with the sheriff's office, and when you look at our total numbers, and, and you look at the numbers of juvenile assaults and look at our total number of assaults, uh, for the county, the vast majority of, of our, uh, child sex offenses and our, you know, assaults is coming from the youth homes. So that's a problem. And they're, they're not our kids. They're kids from, uh, other states, so I'm not quite sure why we're adopting everybody else's problems for us to deal with. Uh, currently, we're up to strength on the patrol section. We have three deputies that are currently in, uh, the FTO program. All three of them were, uh, already post-certified. Uh, one came from Corrections that was, uh, put himself through uh, post down at, uh, what do they call it now? Utah Valley or not Utah Valley? Utah Tech, yeah, it used to be Dixie. And he put himself through, and he's transferred from Corrections over to, over to, to Patrol. Uh, one of them was a part-time deputy that we had in, uh, the courts, and was serving as a bayliff that's now come to patrol full-time. And the third time, third one is a officer that retired from, uh, LAPD in California, and has come to us, uh, and, and additional, we have, we have, uh, three others that are in post, and hopefully, all three of them will be graduating here in about two weeks. Uh, so hopefully, that, that's going to, to go over well for us. Uh, potentially, we're losing five. We're still kind of waiting. We've got one that, uh, potentially is going to be going to the US Marshal's Office, one that's going to the Forest Service, uh, probably here in October. Uh, we've got one that may be going to an Arizona law enforcement agency, and one that we're losing over to CCPD. Um, under K nine, uh, we're, we retired a drug dog here, uh, about a month and a half ago. So we're working on replacing that, that, uh, it's a dual-purpose dog, a, a drug slash patrol dog, and we're going to be replacing it soon. Uh, we get funding for that, for the purchase of that dog from the Task Force Committee. And then, as I said before, uh, we've received the money for our second explosive, uh, dog, and we'll be picking it up probably in January. I, I mentioned this last time, in Cedar City's last, uh, budget, uh, for, that, that became effective July first, they gave an additional five percent raise for their officers, which was already about three percent ahead of us, so right now, they're about eight percent higher than the sheriff's office is. We've mentioned about receiving some F-150 patrol trucks on grants, and that we would like to see if we can't start taking the money that we receive from, uh, grant vehicles and start air-tagging that for a tactical vehicle. We're looking at the possibility of purchasing these, they're called Bearcats, uh, these Bearcat tactical vehicles on a five- or ten-year purchase plan. Uh, if it's a five-year plan, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a year payment. If it's a ten-year plan, it's about a fifty-five thousand dollar a year payment plan. But they're, you know, they're almost half a million dollars apiece. And, uh, but they're, they're absolutely necessary for, uh, the safety of, of the SWAT team, and to give us the ability of being able to potentially, uh, rescue people from barricade situations and different things like that. We have our, our two MRAPs, but we've had those MRAPs now for about fifteen years, and they're, they're about shot. I mean, they're, they're about wore out. Uh, we're, we're getting, the, the armored windows and stuff are starting to glaze over, and we're going to have to start putting money into them to, to keep them up and functional. Uh, I, I think it's, you know, better off for us just to, uh, return those to the federal government and, and to purchase our own Bearcats. For one thing, the Bearcats are a lot safer on the road. They're not nearly as big and, and, uh, much more effective for that. As you're already aware, the sheriff's complex is, is well underway, and has a, uh, completion date of July of twenty twenty-seven currently.
I read an email saying they were hoping that it would dry out for Monday's plumbing, and that was when an inch of rain was coming down.
Yeah, yeah, well, I
Like, so the last time we were waiting for it to dry out, and now it's raining an inch in an hour. It's like, oh, geez.
Yeah, it, you know, it's funny, because I, I went over to help with the livestock at the, uh, Great Stampede Rodeo the other night, night, on Friday night. And Thursday night, it rained hard, and there were two great big pockets of mud in the two east corners. And we were looking at having to open up the gates to bring the livestock through that, that southeast gate. And, uh, and then the heavens opened up, and they ended up calling the radio, uh, the rodeo because of rain, because it was just, we had the lightning flashing right overhead and
Storm. It hit them, it hit, it hit the cove in the mountain hard. That was one of the hardest rains I've seen in a while. That was like the Enic rainstorm when I was out there when that hit.
It was a pretty good rainstorm.
It was a dandy.
So.
Nice to have the moisture. We're grateful.
So whether it's rodeo arenas or the jail site, I think that we, we need some drying out here, so. That's really all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to
Since Maria, you're next anyway. Why don't you come up and let's talk about something real quick with the sheriff while he's here. This, um, this shooting range issue, Frank Nichols came in the shop the other day and just was asking me about his property to the west. He said he wanted to help that guy. He was asking about the road. I'm not, I don't have a dog in this fight. I was just kind of feeling it out for Frank, so, and I let Ken know that. I don't know, I know Ken initially said, well, if they fence our thing also secure from the public, it might work, but anyway, I want you to know that I'm not, I'm just, Frank, Frank is the one that asked me to check it out, and so I called Rich Wilson and asked him about the right-of-way and the road through there, so I don't know where it's gonna go. I don't know.
So, our concern is, um, and I'm thinking it's your concern too, uh, is if we cut that road behind that range, that basically leaves the law enforcement range open. I mean, even though there's a fence, they can see, oh, you know, the public could see over into the law enforcement area. And then it was my understanding that law enforcement now is actually shooting to the south. So they have created bays, and so they would be shooting towards that road, if we cut a road in to allow that access.
I would suggest you two sit down with Frank and talk to him, if you can.
It seems to me like
He's the one, he's the one that's pushing, and Frank's, uh, he's very generous with his property and helping others, and so he, I think, is pushing this pretty hard, because I think he's toured the one, and apparently, these guys have one in St. George or something, and so that's where it's at. The, I was just, he just asked me, hey, can we legally go through there? And I said, I don't know. We'd have to find out from Rich Wilson and see if it's an RS-2477, or if it's got a prescriptive easement, or, but where Ken says it's been locked for twenty years, that probably is not a prescriptive easement, so.
Yeah.
Right, Frank? Or right, Sam? I, so.
I, I, here, let, let me get out of your way while you whoopin'.
I can't even call my kids the right name, let alone you, so don't, don't be offended.
That's correct. It wouldn't be, likely, it wouldn't be any sort of prescriptive easement, and, uh, I'll talk with Rich, but my, in my recollection of the, the road usage is that it's been locked for a long time. Um, and so it'd be surprising if there were any sort of avenues.
I looked on Onyx Hunt Maps, and, and that property is the furthest, it's on the edge of our property.
Yeah.
Before Frank starts.
But there's also a road to the east, uh, just off the shooting range road, that goes right into Frank's, it eventually goes into Frank's property.
Right.
And so I'm kind of like, why are we not
Why don't they just use that one?
At that road instead, because it's so much further, it is, it is further away from the shooting range in terms of shooting, but at least it's still leading into his property.
Maybe you could, you two could just sit down and talk to Frank.
Yeah. Like
Just work through that, I don't know. Okay. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thanks, Ed.
All right. We'll talk tourism first. Sorry, uh, okay. So, uh, TRT collections are slightly less than two thousand twenty-four to date, just slightly. Uh, occupancy has dropped slightly to date as well, um, but, um, as well as the average daily rate. Uh, however, restaurant tax has nearly increased eleven percent over two thousand twenty-four.
Wow.
So I think some of that is that they're starting to collect from grocery stores and gas stations, which they have not done in the past. Um, there was some sort of
Prepared foods. Wasn't that, wasn't that the issue? It was prepared foods?
Yeah, so it was prepared foods, and so grocery stores and gas stations were kind of like, well, what, what's a prepared food? So if it's prepared, in a way, like a restaurant, and it's being served, um, that is a prepared food. If it's a packaged food, that is a grocery store item, and so, um, so there was some clarification that's been, that took place, um, with the law uh, this last year, and I think we're starting to see some of that collection, for sure. And, um, prices have gone up, so of course, your tax on your bill is, is higher, so. But the way I look at it, in comparison to some of the counties around us, and what you're hearing from them, um, we're, Iron County's doing very well. Um, so we know that Washington County is having some, um, definitely seeing some drops, and so is Garfield County.
So is that, sorry to interrupt, but is that due to, so where are we at with this reservation system we've been fighting for so long? Are they in, in Zion's?
Oh, I mean, it's
They're, they're, you know, that's gonna hurt a lot of people.
I know that, uh, our congressional people have been very not happy, um, and have been stated, there's been lots of conversation regarding that. Um, they have put that out there, that they want to do a reservation system. Um, and it's still that process. We're still in that process, so it hasn't been implemented.
Won't hurt us as much as it would Washington County.
Well, I mean, it
Harfield and Kane and those others.
Eventually, it does hurt us, because we do have a certain percentage of people who stay with us, who are going to national parks. But where those counties, you know, have to rely so much on, like, international tourism and um, for the majority of their economic development, that's where it hurts, and so they're, they're definitely seeing some things that are happening. We're really, really fortunate in Iron County, where we're more of a domestic destination, um, with a little tiny mix of international. Um, and so, I say this almost every time, but we tend to go, we tend to go like this, in terms of ebbs and flows, where other counties tend to go like this. So, you know, deep, deep, you know, um, reactions, and, yeah, and so, uh, so we love the fact that we're kind of conservative in terms of what happens, in terms of our tourism and what's going on economically, so. Um, and the funny thing is, is Cedar Brakes is reporting that they're up about seven or eight percent, so. Uh, but I think those, some of that, too, is that they're, have a great visitor center, they're able to report better, they're able to track better, and so I think we're just finally seeing what's actually going through Cedar Brakes, so. Anyways. Um, I'm still pretty hopeful, though, again, because Iron County is still a great, um, you know, as people are a little concerned about how they're spending their money, we're still a great value. I mean, we're still, we have great offerings. They're still budget-friendly. They're very close, you know, we're close to major markets like Las Vegas and Salt Lake. We're easy to get to. Um, and so there are good things that happen in Iron County that aren't necessarily there in some of the other counties, so I think we're doing, I think we're doing pretty good. Uh, as far as grant updates are concerned, we did submit a grant with the Utah Office of Tourism, and we were awarded ninety-five thousand dollars for marketing purposes, and that's a matching grant, so we have to match it, ninety-five thousand dollars, which we can easily do. And, uh, we had two other, uh, the Shakespeare Festival and Bryanhead also applied, and they received funding from that same grant, so that's good for them. Uh, I mentioned this at our, in my last report, but we've partnered with the Utah Office of Tourism and the Seven Month Destination Development Program, which matches a destination expert with, um, four, four businesses, and basically, they're just, they're, he's, this destination expert is there to help them, um, create bookable monetized experiences. So I compare it to your excursion on a cruise ship. It's something that, it's a business that you can sign up and you go and do stuff. And there's money exchanged, and it's really great. Um, we don't do that really well here in Utah. Um, and so it's great to have an expert come in and help us do this. Um, we're part of a pilot program. There are only three counties that uh, were selected to be part of this program, and so we're happy to be part of it. We're narrowing it, uh, down to four businesses this week, and then, um, I will follow along with them this whole way. They are contracted. They have to implement at the end, um, at the end, or they lose the deposit of money that I have asked them to put down on this program, so. Um, I think at the end, it's a pretty good win. Uh, we hosted the Utah Tourism Destination Development Workshop in Cedar City over August eleventh and twelfth. Um, that was a workshop centered on agritourism and dark skies, uh, product development. We had over two hundred and sixty people registered, about two hundred actually attended from all over the state. Uh, fall advertising is in full swing. Um, uh, you don't see what we do, because we don't advertise here. We advertise outside of the area. Uh, we do this through digital, social media, connected TV, streaming, and digital audio, so think Spotify. Um, and then, just kind of a, a follow-up, the discussions with SUU regarding the sports facilities improvements funding. Um, we've basically, um, put it in their hands. It's, um, we're waiting for them to provide us with an agreement. Um, and then we'll counter back with what we would like to see from them. I'm guessing they have not sent you anything, Sam? Okay. So, so the ball is literally in their court, so. Um, and then, uh, we're attending the Utah Tourism And then, uh, we're attending the Utah Tourism Conference in Bryce Canyon at the end of this month, so. And you are, if you would like to attend, I will pay for your registration, um, and I pay for our board's registration as well. Uh, any questions regarding tourism?
I'm just, I'm glad we're supporting the Diamond Z expansion.
Yes.
I can, I was at the livestock show variety, um. Usually buy a beef or half a beef from those kids, it's just great meat, and, uh, but. The, I was talking to Rusty Aiken, and the usages of that facility is just off the charts, that, that gentleman, what's his name?
Scott.
He's just amazing.
Yes, he is.
He, he has something going, they said every, like, every night there.
Correct, yeah, there's either roping, you know, something local, but then on the weekends, he has something that's bringing people in.
That's a huge return on investment, in my opinion, and.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're very happy with that project, um, that was, and we're happy that we paid it off early, so. So that we can look at other stuff, so.
Right, good job on that.
No, Maria's a hero, I, I spent a lot of time with Maria the last couple of months, and it's. Her, her knowledge of her job and, and her expertise has been awesome.
Thank you.
And when I start to get mad, she reminds me that there's a filter button.
I'll try to hand him the filter.
Maria, Maria keeps me in check every once in a while, it's.
Your dad was one of my favorite people.
Mine too, I got smacked by that paddle one time, I, I, I didn't do anything else to earn a spanking after that.
Well, see, discipline is good. Apparently it didn't come into your adulthood, but.
Hey, it got me through middle school.
It got you through middle school, anyways, God bless him.
I did, uh, I didn't be, I didn't come out of middle school Spanish fluent, but I did know how to say some bad words. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Coach, downward. Oh, wow, he would love this, he would love all of this right now. So, anyways, uh, Parks and Recreation, my favorite department, let's, uh, tell you what's going on there. Uh, just a, an issue that's come up, and it, it continues to come up, and so. Um, so I'm coming to you as the commission to, um, to help me, or let's start thinking. Um, so we had a gentleman who came to us, um, and I'm surprised he actually hasn't come to commission. Uh, who has concerns about the fact that our range is unsupervised, um, and what that means is. People who enter, um, participate at their own risk, we have signs that state that as they come in, um, but. As we are growing, and as the range is getting more and more use, um. The risks are definitely there, and they're, um, becoming more and more of a, I don't know, I mean, we do have to have the sheriff out there. Quite often, um, there are just, you know, some things that happen there that maybe we can. Start thinking about, um, this citizen is concerned that we don't have RSO officers out there, which is a range safety officer. Um, and he had some concerns about the berms, the berms, unfortunately, they're, they're built as high as we can go with the equipment that we have. If we wanted to go higher, we would have to really start putting some effort and work into it, um, so.
The condition of the range from now till, from ten years ago is just off the charts.
It's, it's greatly improved, no doubt.
And how do you pay for that, I mean, do you raise taxes, do you charge admission to use the range, do you, what do you do, I mean?
I, I honestly don't know, I think that we need, I would, I'm, I would like us to go on a trip. And let's go look at Purgatory and see how they're doing it, uh, down in St. George, they have several ranges, it is an expense, they do charge. Uh, there's definitely some things going on that are different.
Maybe are some of those people coming up to use ours because they charge down there?
I don't know, but I can tell you that since I've taken over the range, and now, to date. There's a lot of use, we used to have moments where there was nobody on that range, now it's, it's very rare not to. You know, you'll go out there, and there are a lot of people, you know, vying for those bays, we've done some really good improvements that. You know, people want to utilize, and we're glad that they are, cause then they're not shooting out in the boonies and making a mess, and. You know, creating even more, you know, creating problems, that's why we have the range, but I'm wondering if maybe. I'm wondering if maybe there is an RSO program where maybe it is on a volunteer basis, it's a calendar. And people can choose to go to the range when there's an RSO out there, and when there's not, that's their choice too. I mean, it's just, I think there's a way of working this.
Are there passionate enough people that would volunteer?
Um, I have had people claim that they are passionate enough to, they want to volunteer, do we want them to volunteer, I. You know, that's the other thing, we need a vetting process, because there are definitely people who are very passionate about. The sport of shooting, um, but, and take it, and can take it to a whole new level, um, and so. I really just, I want us to start thinking about the range and how we want it to be.
If you didn't find the right person, you might create more problems.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, I've talked with Blaine Nae, he's, he's like, um, and I appreciate his opinion. And, um, he's like, I think there are people out there who could be trained, and then, again, it's like, maybe it's on the calendar. And if people wanna be out there when there's an RSO, they can choose to look at the calendar and be there when that, during that time, when there's not an RSO. Then they can be there as well, but I also, you know, look to Sam, like, liability and those kinds of things. You know, but, we're just, kind of, we've, there's definitely some issues going on with the range, and we just need to. Start thinking about how we're going to address them for the future, because there's just gonna be more growth and more use. And, and how do we wanna, how do we wanna take care of things, so. So if, if you would be interested in going to Purgatory, I would like to put that together, and just. And have you guys come and look and see what that's all about.
You buying drinks?
I'm buying drinks.
A worthwhile expedition, just to see it through another lens.
Yeah, I just, I've been, but I was go, I went as a user, and, and not necessarily. Um, with like, any kind of, hey, give me a back tour, you know, have the, uh, the range director, you know, show us around, and so. I'd like to reach out to that person, and just show us how you're doing things, and see if maybe what we can do. To kind of mitigate some of this, um, cause it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get harder, so. Anyways, just moving on, um, we've had lots of events out at the, out, uh, Three Peaks. Um, our last event is the, the High School, uh, Mountain Bike State Championship, um, I included in your packet. Um, an email from one of the neighbors out there, who was very happy with all the work that we've been doing to. Mitigate some of the impacts from that race, um, and has really been very, very happy with the fact that we've been able to move. The race down the road, uh, because, uh, Bruce and him, uh, taking care of that road, Bruce and Bryce. Um, and so, um, we've worked with the race directors to be better communicators, um, the neighbors have been very appreciative of that. Um, and so it's a win-win, that is a great economic boost to Iron County in October, that is a lot of people out there. And that is a lot of, um, uh, you know, purchases and hotels being bought, so. Anything we can do to keep that race here, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that, um, other than that, uh. Today, the revenue is generated in the parks is a little over eleven thousand dollars, um, last year, our total was like twelve thousand, so we're way ahead. You know, we're doing really well in terms of generating some revenue, um, some of that is coming from opening Five Mile, of course. So, uh, Wood Ranch, we're just, if you haven't been up there, we put in a brand new fence along the highway, it looks really nice, um, that was with our. Thanks to our gel crew, um, we just, uh, chip sealed the parking lot, it looks really, really nice, and then DNR just did. A, um, volunteer project up there, um, a couple of weeks ago, and they removed a lot of the deadfall, and so. And I think I included a little picture of that in your report. Uh, Five Mile, just so you know, the Forest Service is removing a lot of trees along the Bowery Creek. Um, the, what, what is it, the olive, the Russian olive, they're trying to get rid, rid of a lot of the invasive species. They're, um, working with us to, uh, make sure that we put, um, that they put back some better. Vegetation, uh, we're asking them that we want some trees back, and some, just some good bushes and things like that. Um, and so they're working to have them be, uh, like native plants, um, that project, in terms of Five Mile. Won't start until the end of October, probably early November. Um, we're also working with, um, the Forest Service on the possibility of putting in a well up there, so. We might be able to get some water, um, and there, and we're also working with Parowan City on maybe possibly using their irrigation water. So it won't be drinking water, but it will be some water, at least, uh, for putting out fires, so, we'll see how that goes. Um, excited about that, uh, at Three Peaks, we completed the O H V parking area. And we're still working on the new pavilions in the group area, so there's some little pavilions that we've been putting up over the year. Over this past year, while Bryce and team, and then, um, on the shooting range, the B L M has approved the South Boundary Expansion. Um, we're just waiting on Jay Adams to finish the boundaries descriptions to move it forward. Um, and then we have split the group area into two ranges, um, with a gate in the middle, so that we can better utilize that area. So more people can actually reserve the group area, so now we can have two groups in. Uh, at a time if we wanted to, and then we just put a gate down the middle, so if somebody wants to rent the whole range, we just open that gate. For them, um, we'll be extending some of the bays later on in the year, so it'll actually accommodate more types of shooting groups. Um, with that change, we do need to implement a new fee change, and I'll bring that to commission meeting next time. Um, just because it's two, now two bays, not one big bay, so. Uh, any questions regarding Parks and Rec?
No. Again, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I, I do need to reschedule with you for Friday, though.
Oh, okay.
So I can come visit with you.
Yeah, visit with me after.
Uh, okay, Commissioner Robinson, you.
Really exciting two weeks, had the county fair, obviously, and all the activities that go along with that, so we, I was able to attend. A lot of those activities, had a great time, um, Jamie did a fantastic, Jamie and her crew, and countless. County employees that participate and help her in that activity, did a phenomenal job. Um, very impressed by the participants that we had, it's great to see that there's. At the, at the rodeo, great to see that there's multiple, um. Top participants in each event, multiple N F R qualifiers in each event, so that was awesome to see. Um, but kudos to her and her crew, um, obviously meetings at the gel site. Uh, those are ongoing, and things are moving along there, um, had a call about. The drainage system, or the, the ditch canal that was dug from here that goes out to. The Little Salt Lake, and crossing different properties, and weed control on that, and so I'll be addressing that, and, and looking into. Exactly how that was implemented, and what went on there, so, Reed, maybe you can help me a little bit on that, and.
Well, that water, I talked, I talked to Scott Stubbs about that, he called me as well, but, um, apparently that water used to go down Highway ninety-one. There's a lot, so many homes, in, was it two thousand and five when we had all the snowpack on the mountain? There was so much snowpack up there, they were scared to death, it was gonna come down fast and just flood everybody, and it did flood some, but they handled it well, they. They dug that channel, and they dug the one out to Quitchba, and, uh, and it did a good job, but, anyway, yeah, but I told Scott.
That, that's an issue that, that's, needs to be addressed, uh, his, his main concern was the weed control.
You might also coordinate with, uh, Dan Jessen from Parowan City, I know that, um, they're doing stuff upstream of that. That might affect that, but the weed control, I guess, probably remains an issue.
Yeah, yeah, Amber obviously will have a large.
We've had some people, you know, with the channel that goes along Holy, parallel with Hollow Oak Lane and down, and, and some of these channels. You know, people, some people complain about them to us, but if we hadn't have done those, water would just, they would flood everybody. It, it's a, it's a necessary thing to have hat, to, to control that water and put it in a certain area, and it's a challenge sometimes, but. I try to remind people that if we let that water continue going down the Highway ninety-one, there's a lot of new homes down there, and they'd all get flooded, so, it's, it's a.
Yep, that's it.
Commissioner Blake?
Alright, just have a, a few things, um. Can't mention the fair, um, the, I, the fair has grown and become such a cool event in Iron County, and there's. I sat back and watched a lot this year, there's just, there's a few people that I'd kinda like to thank. Um, first of all, you guys, it's so appropriate you guys are here today, the, uh, the service that Miss Iron County, Miss Color Country. Or, uh, rodeo princesses, uh, the service that they provide during the fair. Just being available and helping out, they're not only, you know, uh, they're not only, uh, pretty and nice. And they, they work hard too, so, uh, we really appreciate their help with the fair every year. I, I actually had that written down on my paper before you guys walked in, I'm like, oh yeah, they're coming today, so it worked out good. So during rodeo and other events, the, one of the biggest complaints that we get, and like, my texter just. Blows up every year, is people standing along the fence in the front, so that other people in the stands can't see. Um, we were able to, to find an individual this year to kinda help police that, um. And, uh, I, I wanna recognize him, his name's Doug Ball, he lives here in Parowan, uh, he volunteered to. Uh, take on that unpleasant duty, um, Jamie gave him a vest and a hat. Fed him a cheeseburger, and.
It was on.
And, and Doug was at all of those events, and, and really helped that, in fact, I, I got several texts. During the rodeo that are like, hey, thanks, and so, anyway, the, the, the text went from. Hey, you gotta do something about these people, to, oh, hey, you did something about those people, and, and we appreciate it, but. But Doug's a, he's an enthusiastic guy here in Parowan, that, that, uh, likes to be involved in neighborhood watch, and different things like that, and he. He was, turned out to be really helpful during the fair, um, on Sundays, there's a tradition of. An elected official dinner, uh, followed by the Sunday evening program, uh, which is always good. I'd just like to take a second and, and recognize Lloyd and Dana Stubbs and their family, for, every year, they provide the food. Um, and it's, it's generally home cooking, uh, it's always really good. And that's really become kind of a tradition for that family to, to bring the food, and we really appreciate them for that. Uh, on Monday, uh, we had the parade, we all participated in hucking candy at the people. It's always, and when I say hucking candy, you know, there's people in the back row that are jumping up, and now we try and get the candy out to them. In the back row as well.
Watch out for friendly fire.
It's all, yeah, there's.
I think I hit a few people in the head.
I, I bounced, I'm not gonna say who, but there's somebody, and I, it was inadvertent, but I hit a guy right between the eyes, I saw it coming. And I knew who it was, but I didn't know that he was there when I threw the candy, but it, I was like, he saw it, hit him right between the eyes, and then bounce off, and some kids got it. I'm like, gee, but, it was fine. But one thing that we were, that we were able to do, and I don't know who took advantage of it, but we were, you know, Monday's rodeo. As things wind down, it's a little less well-attended, people are kinda fared out by the time we get to Monday night, and we were able to. Offer our county employees, uh, two tickets to that Monday night rodeo, um, I was out of town. Um, I was out of town Monday night by then. I didn't attend that rodeo, but I hope that people took advantage of that. That was.
I saw several employees there. It was good.
Good.
It was really good.
Yeah, that was, when, when Jamie came to the commission and says, hey, do you think we can offer tickets to our employees? I mean, we all said absolutely. That's, I mean, anything that we can do to give people a perk. Um, attended the council on government. That's a, a monthly meeting, quarterly meeting. Um, that we uh, attend and, and counsel with mayors and the other elected officials in the county. Uh, the sheriff and uh, Sam and uh, George from emergency management. Uh, Chief Adams from Parowan P D. Met the other day to discuss our uh, air ambulance needs in the county. Those are kind of the uh. Agencies that are affected the very most. Uh, we've got some issues there uh, that we're trying to get on top of. Uh, I just had an each, I just had a, an opportunity this last couple of weeks. I've. Gone around and met with each of my assigned department heads, visited uh, the employees in those, each of those departments. Uh, as well as a few that weren't mine, just by the fact that they're in close proximity, I tried to reach out and. Uh, just tell folks that we appreciate them and uh, make sure everything's running good. Uh. The sheriff mentioned the bomb dog. There's a, George was able to, to find a grant to help fund that canine. George called me the other day, Commissioner Blake? You wanna go to Missouri? Like, I don't know, George, what's in Missouri? Well, the dog costs twenty-five hundred dollars. And shipping was, or not the dog, but, but training materials for the dog because they're explosive. About twenty-five hundred dollars and then the shipping was thirty-five hundred dollars. So George was like, if you and I drive to Missouri, we're gonna be able to save a bunch of money and we'll go pick up all these explosives. Uh, ultimately, we were able to get the grant to cover all but nine hundred of that shipping cost. And I said, we'll find the money to go ahead and, and pay that nine hundred dollar shipping. Cause even one guy couldn't drive to Missouri and back on nine hundred dollars. But George was willing to start the truck up and start rolling east. That night, so. It's a very zealous individual. We appreciate him. That's, that's all I got.
Alright, it's just time these two have covered about everything. I did go to the, the fair. It was awesome. The um. We, we attended the rodeo Monday night with our grandsons and. I, I put up some chairs on the grass area on the front before the parade started and uh, it was just awesome having a front row seat. Beautiful evening and really enjoyed it and, and I did whatever these two said about the fair. It was, it was incredible. Um. I wanted to just read something real quick. I asked uh, um. I asked Darren Bushman, he's our new director of Five County. We hired him not long ago and he's just doing an incredible job. And he's making a lot of changes to, for the better. Um. And I'm just gonna read a text he sent me this morning. He talked to me the other day about it, but I wanted to summarize it. He said, we have made an organizational change to consolidate the heat program, the weatherization program, and our community action program. Under a single director. These programs all share a common set of questions and intake. The programs will eventually have a common set of staff. That can accommodate any of the programs. We intend to have a single office in Iron County and a single office in Saint George. And a single office in Hurricane that can provide all the services. We will also have cross, we will also cross train personnel who travel to Beaver, Garfield and Kane. And can also provide intake for all services. The belief is by combining and streamlining these services, our citizens will get better customer service and experience a one-stop shop. Long-term goal would be to get out of multiple leases and combine into a single location. So he's trying to save us a lot of money. There's been a lot of leases signed that were kind of unnecessary. We're trying to get out of some of those and, and trying to, you know, just consolidate and save, save money. In addition, this will allow for our current cap director to focus more heavily on housing. As that was the number one need as determined by the need of these assessments. So. He's doing a terrific job. Just wanted to give him kudos for that. Uh, one other thing I want to mention, the, the storm drain H D P E pipes we put in out on eight hundred south by the. By the uh, transfer station. By holidays that always got flooded. Every time it rains hard, I worry about that area. Like, I was on my way out there the other night and I called. I called Rich Wilson, our engineer, and he was already out there and I said, how's it working? He says, it's working terrific. So. Water's shooting through there beautifully. Our cross, cross-channel we built and the, and the. And the, that's where we had a lot of trouble every year and just thrilled that it's working good. I, I know there was maybe some minimal flooding, but I really didn't hear of any. So we're, and for as much rain as we got, I thought we were gonna have a lot of people flooded, but it. It worked out really well and we're very, very grateful for the, for the moisture.
Can I just mention one more thing? So another thing in, in conduct, in uh, conjunction with the fair. Uh, Davy Burton, who's uh, lives here in Parowan, works for D O T. He's a volunteer with the Parowan Fire Department. He's been on the rodeo committee for years and very involved in the fair. He was actually recognized by Justin Boots as a community volunteer. Uh, and I had the, the honor to uh, I guess walk out in the arena and present Davy with a new pair of Justin boots.
Nice.
So, but uh, yeah, he's such a cool dude. Like, he's such a great asset to our county, just. The, the volunteerism, the willingness to help out with everything. Uh. So that was cool. I had the, the opportunity to go give Davy a new pair of ostrich boots, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Uh, so I just wanted to recognize him as well.
Thank you, appreciate you bringing that. Okay, it's uh, what is it, almost twenty after? Let's take about a five or ten minute. Let's do, let's resume this meeting at ten thirty. We're running a little long, but uh, it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Not happy with her, but she did bring cookies, so it's gonna be fine.
You'll work through it?
Work through it.
Alright Commissioner.
Alright, thanks. Looks like we're ready to go. We'll resume our county commission meeting this Monday, the 8th, the day of September. I just keep trying to say December. Let's, I wanted to ask, is there anyone here for items one or two in regards to the public hearings? Seeing none, I am going to move agenda item number four up, so these good ladies can go ahead and introduce Ms. Iron County and Ms. Iron County teen and their community service initiatives. So you're, you've got the floor.
Hi, I'm Karen Entz, and I am here to officially resign as the Ms. Iron County Director.
We don't have to accept it honestly.
Look, she brought us cookies.
Thank you for the cookies, we do not accept.
You'll have to bring better cookies next time.
I want to thank you, county commissioners, for being so wonderful. I co-directed for two and then directed for six. And you were wonderful along with Marilyn Wood and Almet Adams, I believe it is. All so, so great. I appreciate you coming to the pageant and the funds that help support the program. I have loved it. It's time for me to go be with my grandkids and do some things with them, so. I will be hanging around throughout the year to kind of help train. And I, I hope I left it better than I found it, and I know that Amanda and Ashton will do the same. Amanda Giles and Ashton Giles, soon to be Zobel, Zobel, are the new directors. Ashton has been through the program as Ms. Iron County's teen and as Ms. Iron County. A fabulous Ms. Iron County. Just, I couldn't have ended my year on such a, she was just really, really great. So, I'm going to present to you Amanda Giles, and she will introduce to you Ms. Iron County, Ms. Iron County's teen, and Ms. Color Country's teen. And again, thank you so much for everything. I probably would never have rubbed shoulders with such prominent people if I wouldn't have done this. So, it's been really fun. Thank you so much.
Thank you, you're awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Karen, you give it the best.
I'm sorry, I have to go to work.
I have to write this down, don't get so nervous. I'm Amanda Giles, Ashton Giles' mom. We're gonna co-direct. She's not here, she's in school. So for these reasons right here, right, we can help each other out. I, as she said Ashton, and you've seen her, has served. It's been really cool to see what the program is all about, and that it's about leadership and service. And as Ashton can finish her years, she wanted to help more. And to be able to mentor these girls and teach them what community service is all about and lead by example. Last, last night, the Miss America Pageant was on, and I know these girls watched it. And one thing that people don't understand about Miss America is, it is leadership and service. And the announcer said, "Her year of leadership begins now." And that is my whole goal, and Ashton's whole goal, is to teach these girls what it means to lead and serve our communities. So, I'm excited to take it, and Ashton as well, to another level and mentor these girls. So I'm going to introduce to you our Ms. Color Country, Reagan Reynolds. Our Ms. Teen Iron County, Sydney Rasmussen, and our Ms. Iron County, Shelby Springall.
Hello, I am Reagan Reynolds. I am currently Ms. Color Country's teen. And my community service initiative is called Mind in Motion. And what that specifically focuses on is individuals improving their mental health through physical activity. I'm so excited for my year of service. I was Ms. Iron County's teen last year, and I'm excited to continue that. My plan for this year is I want to dedicate each school for a month. And so this month I plan on going to Fiddler's Elementary, and then in October, North, and so forth. And I also am a big dancer myself, and I think that that has helped me with my CSI and figure out who I am with my CSI. And so I want to do master classes to help with girls and all the funds that I raise. I want to put that towards the American Heart Association, and thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You know that for every dancer, there's a dance dad out there.
Oh yeah, my dad is the biggest dance dad out there.
I was one of them. Sat through thirteen hours of dancing.
Yes.
Saturday. It was awesome. I miss it.
Yes, it's so much fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sydney Rasmussen. I am Ms. Iron County's teen this year. And my community service initiative is called Her Light. And it is all about helping girls find confidence and love on social media, which tends to tear girls down. And one thing about my community service initiative is, it started out just on social media. But I would love to be able to do stuff in the community, like with girls, or with kids, or whatever it may be. One thing that I'd love to do is go to schools and, you know, teach them a little bit about why I chose this community service initiative. And one thing that has helped me find confidence is through singing. And I want to be able to teach kids that, and maybe do some workshops with, like, teaching kids how to sing and, like, have, how to build their confidence and things like that. Another thing I'd love to do is, one, like, have the kids at the schools write cards to maybe people at the hospital who are sick. And write things like, "You're amazing," you know, like, "You can do hard things," and stuff like that. And just give them to the kids at the hospital as a way to help those kids feel loved. And the last thing is, just keep posting on my social media. I post quotes, or stories, or videos, just uplifting things every day. And I, I know it's already helped so many people because they've told me about it. And so, I just, I'm super excited to serve my community this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Hi guys.
Hello.
My name is Shelby Springall. I am a pre-dental student at Southern Utah University this year, going into my junior year of college. And my CSI is STEAM Find Your Sparkle. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, Mathematics. I found my sparkle with STEAM in a really lonely part of my life. And I believe that it is something that can build confidence, curiosity, and creativity. And foster a whole new side of learning and growing new leaders here in our community, here in Iron County. My plan throughout the year, I've created a social media series called STEAM Sundays, where I provide really easy at-home activities that kids can do with their families. So that they too can find that sparkle that they are hiding down deep inside. And that they too can also find what I've found, and grow, and learn all these lessons of teamwork, entrepreneurship, leadership. All skills that can take these young individuals out into the world and make them even better people. I plan on also partnering with SU STEM Center to help provide these kids K through 12 with free educational needs that for. We live in communities where some kids don't have access to all these really high-tech opportunities. And I really do believe that with the STEM Center, we can really bring this new education in. And we give these kids what they need to help go out and succeed.
That is so cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for having us here.
No, welcome. And we'll have an opportunity, we'll rub shoulders all year. Well, there's different events and activities that will be, and we'll, yeah, we look, I look forward to working with you guys. I speak for all of us, but, yeah, no, thank you.
Very exciting, and being left in very good hands. I am neighbors with Amanda and Ashton, and they're very driven. So they're, it's left in very, very good hands, very confident.
Yeah, Amanda and Ashton are my kinfolk, so, you know, there, there couldn't be any more. It's been fun to watch Ashton as a child and then turn into such a cool young adult lady. She, yeah, it's, she's been such a great example, and, yeah, it's just cool.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Are we gonna do the usual obligatory picture?
We know you put your makeup on.
It took me an hour to do my hair this morning.
We're glad you did it.
Are we going down, or are they coming?
Right here.
Where's she usually standing?
Right here.
No, 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 like, the photographer.
Wherever it looks good for you.
Oh wait. Mike, is your chair all the way?
I don't know.
Make sure you can see the iron camera.
Yeah.
Cut us off.
One, two, three, okay, four, five. Oh, the cookies. You got this on the record over there?
Oh yeah.
Alright, let's wait, let's let the girls make sure it's okay.
Yeah, really?
You know how that goes. And if it's not, don't be afraid, we have.
My eyes were closed.
I like it.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Yeah. Good job, guys!
Alright. Guys, you're standing by.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, quick question for you.
Yeah.
Have you ever done a cover of Iconolia Max?
No, I would love to though. I love that song.
I listened to about fifteen of them yesterday driving home from Idaho, and I thought, Sidney needs to sing this.
No, yeah, I wanted like, sing all over the community.
You switched seats.
I'll do it.
Yeah, well, maybe not, I don't know.
Funny.
I'm good. She moved him with the cookies, or whose glasses did she grab?
So, one more quick item, going, going back to the fair. For years, Jeannie has been tasked with kicking people off the fence.
Nice.
So, it's been, you know, we've, hopefully Doug will take over that role, and Jeannie will no longer have to be harangued, threatened, harassed. So, but I want to recognize Jeannie's years of service as our fence patrol. So.
So in the twenty-five-year plan, hopefully that will not be an issue, and that will not be needed anymore. Spent the last week in Idaho and took the opportunity to look at other venues as I traveled. And there's some great ideas out there that we can implement into our twenty-five-year plan, and I shared those with Jamie, and they're just, there's some really cool seating configurations that, that we can put together that'll.
That's great.
It's awesome to that.
Alright, let's go back to item number one. This is a public hearing. Discussion on Possible Approval of a Proposed County Code Amendment Ordinance 2025-7 to the Iron County Land Use Code. Amending Section 17 dot 16 dot 030 Table of Uses. Section 12 dot 12 dot 030 Fees and Approachment Permits, and Adding Section 16 dot 28 dot 015. Requiring a plat amendment for a full boundary adjustment and providing an effective date.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you. I'm not sure whether I should resign or announce my platform. How you start this thing?
Where are you going next?
Yeah.
Whatever it is, it's gonna require cookies.
Uh, yeah, well. Both were some great platforms, I thought, that their ambitions and service projects, that was great.
Very cool.
This ordinance was recommended by the Planning Commission. It addresses three things that have been needed to be changed in the ordinance, our county code. One of the things that motivated it was a desire to expand the uses in the RA20 zone. We'd had a request for a conditional use permit with the property owner assuming it was A20 for a light industrial use. And then found out the property was RA20, and it wasn't allowed in the RA20 zone. So we considered it with staff, and the Planning Commission recommended that we do allow the light industrial zone or use in the RA20 zone. To expand the opportunity for businesses in the RA20 zone if it's monitored through the conditional use permit process. And there are some specific languages in the code that talks about how, when a conditional use is, is given for a light industrial use. It's commensurate with the uses that are occurring in that zone. So even though currently it's zoned in, it's allowed in the light industrial, industrial and intensive agricultural zone as a permitted use. And then the A20 zone is a conditional use. By looking at it as a, a conditional use in the RA20 zone, we would compare it with other uses that are allowed in the RA20 zone. And set conditions that would be commensurate with the uses that were at that level. So it does have that flexibility in there. We don't have to just say, you know, it's the same everywhere. The zoning allows for that tailoring to be the impact mitigation and evaluation based on the zone and the surrounding uses. So that was a consideration. The second part of the ordinance is a compliance with state code. That in the, in this last legislative session, they created a couple of new definitions for lot line adjustments. What we called previously lot line adjustments that are now referred to as, as simple boundary adjustments or full boundary adjustments. And the code, the, the state code requires that if we're going to require an amended plat for a full boundary adjustment, we have to do it by ordinance. So that's why we're including it in here. The assessor's office, or the recorder's office, the planning staff, building, everybody felt like it was appropriate. uh, planning staff building, everybody felt like it was appropriate that we do that and that we consider a full boundary adjustment to be required, uh, be to require a plat amendment rather than just doing it by deeds. And I can talk about that a little bit more as well for if you have questions. The third section of the code removes the fees from the code section related to encroachment permits because they are in conflict, excuse me, with the codes in the adopted fee schedule. And this is often the case when an ordinance is adopted. Excuse me, we put the code, we put the fee amount in there and then we adopt a fee schedule that has a different amount that keeps pace and the ordinance doesn't get changed. So this is simply taking that out of the ordinance and leaving it with the fee schedule and just referring to the fee schedule for the fees. And we've done that in other sections of the code as well. So the first section allowing it in RA twenty zone is simply a modification of the table that just takes the X out and puts a C there for the RA twenty zone for the light industrial use is a simple amendment. The second one here is the language uh, that proposes the full boundary adjustment. And this is right out of state code. And so it requires a conveyance document, a survey that complies with the statutory requirements. And then the way that the state code reads, it says, and if required by ordinance, a proposed plat amendment corresponding with proposed boundary adjustment. So we just took that if required by ordinance out and just put that in our ordinance that it is required. And everybody was on board with that. The third provision, oh, just to explain a little bit about what the differences are between a boundary adjustment and a full boundary adjustment or a simple boundary adjustment. Is that a full boundary adjustment, if you read the very bottom definition, is a boundary adjustment that is not a simple boundary adjustment. That's a sophistication of our codes, uh, that state code right there by definition. But the, a simple boundary adjustment is if there's not going to be of the vacation or amendment of an easement, a right of way, any internal lot restrictions, anything like that. It can be a simple boundary adjustment, which is simply a lot line adjustment where the agreement between two property owners of a lot in a subdivision can move their, their, their boundary um, without having to do a plat amendment if it's a, a simple one. But if it affects any of those things, then it has to be an amended plat. And we felt like in order to track those kind of things, because it's not just going to be associated with that deed or those two deeds. It has to do with rights of way and other things. And the only way to track that is through the plat. So that's why that's being done. The rest are just pretty straightforward. Unless you have questions, we can go to public hearing.
For as much of a mouthful as that was, it's really fairly simple.
Yeah, it is.
I don't have, I don't have any.
Sorry for making it more complicated than it need to be. That's part of my platform. Making it more complicated than they need to be.
For every word over ten, you have to bring a cookie. I don't know how that works.
Reed did have to open a bakery. Let's, let's, let's move on. Let's, Cheryl declare this public hearing open. If there's anybody like to speak to this issue, come up and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and, and Reed, if you want to summarize, and we'll vote.
Any discussion?
Nope, we're good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to the proposed county amendment ordinance as contained in item number one in the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval of a proposed update ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight to the Iron County Transportation Plan adding thirty-seven hundred west as a major collector between four thousand north and Mid Valley Road, forty-eight hundred north. Applicant, Iron County, Rich Wilson, or is Reed gonna handle this?
Uh, Rich is here to answer questions. Uh, while I've got it up, I'm just, and since I say so few words, I'm gonna introduce this just.
The problem is, is Rich is, is longer wind than you are.
Yeah, we'll take Reed.
Not coming up here.
How are you, how are you in regards to that?
We enjoy Brett's hand signals for the record.
This road is located just right here off of um, as described on, in the ordinance where we did not have a master planned road on the transportation plan that connected four thousand and Mid Valley Road except for Lund and then this, this certuitous route out here to Three Peaks. And so when we had some proposed developments in the last few couple of months that showed because of that property, I'm just gonna show you the property zoning, that's R one half. So the proposed route is the yellow dotted line and the red or the blue line is the belt route. And so when, when you look at all of the R one half and the R one and the fact that there's a sewer line right there and a lot of other infrastructure already available with water, central account and water conservancy water, we're gonna see higher densities out there and there's gonna be higher, uh, more people in those neighborhoods. And we felt like we would be best off of putting, putting that on the master planned road. Uh, this was a recent subdivision that was approved, Valley Stratton subdivision. And you can see the red line is thirty-seven hundred. And that was, uh, uh, we visited with the property owner, they had a, already a thirty-three foot sewer easement that ran up the, the east side of that property that they were reserving. And so it wasn't really a hard sell to convince them, let's just call that a right of way. And then take it out of the subdivision so it could be dedicated and that's what will occur. Uh, the, the ma, the preliminary plat has been approved. When the final plat is approved, then that'll dedicate that thirty-three feet. Then when development occurs on the east side, then we'll get the other thirty-three feet. The other subdivision that we were looking at is this subdivision and you can see in the bottom right corner is that forty acre that I just talked about. But then going north from there is this other subdivision with half acre and one acre lots. Uh, and that crosses the belt route and then goes right on up. And so we felt like it, you know, with that kind of development density out there, we really needed to have that road go through in light of the fact that it's already a sewer easement. The sewer lines there um, makes sense to put the road there. So that's why that's being added. Uh, you can just see it here on that transportation plan with the overlay of those two subdivisions in there to show where that occurs. So that was just kind of a, another no-brainer. It just makes sense. And, and everybody was on board with that as we talked to the developers there as well. So this is the exhibit that's attached to the ordinance, just showing in the blue circled area, the, the, the road that will be added as a major collector, which is a sixty-six foot right of way.
Okay, we'll go to a public hearing. Chair will declare that open. If there's anyone like to speak to item number two.
Now I can speak as the public.
We love you, Rich.
I'm sorry, you have to limit it to three minutes, sir.
We don't know if you can do, we don't know if that's possible, Rich. So you might as well not even try.
It's bad when you get a pile of engineers, it's even, it's bad.
Uh, let's hurry and close this hearing. Um, it's closed. Go ahead.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
No. You're up.
Okay, I'd move for uh, approval of the updated ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight to the Iron County Transportation Plan adding thirty-seven hundred west as a major collector between four thousand north and Mid Valley Road, which is forty-eight hundred north.
Second that motion.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we'll go to, thank you, Reed. We'll go to item number three, public comments. This is a three-minute time limit per speaker. If you'd like to speak, state your name and approach the mic. Seeing none, we will go on to number five. We took care of four. Uh, review, discussion and possible approval of notice of non-compliant property for properties located in the Pleasant Hills subdivision. Who's handling that?
Same.
That's what you call delegation.
That's good. Um, so we've reviewed uh, the Pleasant Hills subdivision. Um, it's an illegal subdivision, doesn't have everything necessary in terms of permitting, water, infrastructure. We provide some limited municipal services like emergency services and solid waste.
Is that the one on fifty-six?
Correct.
Out, out west, on the south side.
I wonder, should we pull up a map to show?
We've been out there and looked at it.
Okay.
And.
Well, the, the purpose of it coming to commission today is that we prepared a document. I don't know, John, if that's in the packet. Uh, but it's a proposed filing to go on and be recorded with each property with Carrie uh, to red flag any future purchasers of the property. This is uh, most surely going to impact the value of that property, uh, even the limited value that it had already. Uh, will further reduce that. We talked with Carsten at the assessor's office and he brought one of his deputies, um, who's familiar with kind of the issue. We talked about how to address that with these property owners and in terms of what value do we assign them for, for taxing purposes. Um, and there's a wide variety of approaches across the state of Utah. Uh, we do think that there, there is still going to be some value associated uh, with the properties, but also uh, yeah, that's the subdivision. But also these property owners are receiving the benefit of certain county services, including you know, beyond just this subdivision. It includes roads across the county, schools, police services, et cetera. So um, in any event, we wanted to get the commission's blessing before uh, we made any sort of attempt to move forward on this, but uh, we do believe it's necessary um, for um, just long-term enforcement of our zoning ordinances. Uh, it's an ongoing issue. It's not easily remedied. There could be, you know, enhanced steps that are a little more aggressive, but we feel like this is an appropriate measured approach in that it notifies future property owners. This is not a good property to buy unless you know what you're buying. And then um, that should help stem some of the, the continued growth of that area or the continued transition of the property. But ultimately, our approach with this filing is to just make sure that current and future property owners know what they have, know what they can and cannot do. And that'll help us in uh, in enforcement of our zoning ordinance. Those are the primary concerns. But what questions do you have or have been raised?
We received a letter from a Realtor that was concerned. It was, I think he wanted it, wanted us to bring it into compliance so that they could here to sell the lots and houses and, but, but we're, we're basically just flagging the deeds and saying, hey, there's a problem here, buyer beware, right?
And to be clear, we, we, we've tried and discussed this multiple times to see if there's any avenue to bring these into compliance. And there's just not. Uh, they're too far outside of our tiering areas that would allow for rezoning or restructuring for a higher density. And it's just not possible under our current setup or the current state of how Iron County is developing. So in the future, uh, perhaps that could be possible, but as it is right now, it's just not. If that's a, a fair assessment, Reed. Okay.
It was brought up during that meeting with the assessor's office that the Utah code requires that we give them an avenue and we did do that.
And that was related to, I, I did look at that with Merrily. Um, Rich was referencing some uh, statutory obligations we have to allow people to come into compliance under certain circumstances. I don't think this was one of those circumstances that allowed or required us to give them an avenue forward. But even if it did, we said, you know, basically you're gonna have to scrap it and make twenty acre parcels. So that would be their step forward to become compliant.
And that was my point, that they, they, they do have one avenue.
Right.
And it's coming into compliance.
And as you can see at the end of our notification here, um, basically this is not a waiver by Iron County. In the future, it's determined by this or future county commissions that we need to take action to bring it into further compliance. We can do that, but this is, as Paul said, uh, just a, a flag of the deed.
That sounds, I mean, that's buyer beware. That's, that's a good thing to make sure that future buyers or, or property owners know what they're getting into.
But this is gonna have an impact. And so before we did anything, we just want the commission to, to take action to, to approve the our measures to enforce our zoning ordinance. That's all.
We kinda did the same thing with water rights, right? I mean.
That's fair to say, yeah, with our ordinance that we.
Or, hey, there might be a problem with your water, beware. So, so, okay. Any other questions or discussion?
No.
No. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. For five.
Make a motion to, for approval of notice of non-compliant property for properties located in the Pleasant Hills subdivision.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number six, discussion and possible approval of resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eight authorizing the filing of cross appeals for two thousand twenty-five centrally assessed properties.
Do you want me to talk, speak to that, Sam?
Oh, sorry, we're on to the next one. I thought you were asking about that one. Yes, will you speak to that, Doug?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So um, in our taxation that we do, the values that we provide come from the assessor's office, with the exception of centrally assessed that are assessed by the state tax commission. When those values are appealed by the owners, often those properties cross state lines. We're talking about like railroads or transmission lines. Um, and so we, there's this notion of cross appeals. And so we have to be able to uh, kind of band together with the other counties. We use Tom Peters. Um, and we have to authorize those cross appeals, basically. I, I think it's the equivalent of us kind of teaming up as a class action counter suit to the appealing of values, if I could try to put it into vernacular. But, but basically this is a required thing that happens nearly every year because nearly every year, well, every year that I've ever been around that they've, they've appealed those values and then we have to um, do a, a cross appeal to counter the appeal value, even though we didn't come up with the value. It's a very weird situation, but that's, that's how that works.
So Tom Peters did send his proposed resolution language and it's appropriate. So um, if you're so inclined, it would be appropriate to approve. Okay.
And I guess I didn't clarify that this, this uh, resolution is only for Utah Iron LLC and Pacific Corp, Inc. That's shown on the screen there.
Okay.
Gotcha.
All right.
All right. I'd move for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight authorizing the filing of cross appeals for twenty twenty-five centrally assessed properties.
Second that.
So it moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Seven, discussion and possible approval of a two proposed off, off-premise advertising signs located at thirty thirty-five South Old Highway ninety-one. Approximately point nine nine acres, APN number E dash two four two. Applicant is Saunders Outdoor Advertising. And Brett, I'm gonna get, uh, I, I was at planning commission and we told Mr. Weston Sa- Saunders that he didn't need to drive from Ogden for this meeting and that I would call him and put him on the phone.
Sounds good.
So I will do that. Siri call eight oh one four five two nineteen ninety-two.
John, can you switch the screen?
What do we want to be on?
It's back to that PowerPoint.
Hello, this is Weston.
Mr. Saunders, this is Paul Cousins. How are you today?
I'm good. How you doing?
Good. We've got you on speakerphone and, and we, we're discussing uh, gen item number seven, which is dealing with your signs. And uh, we'll go ahead and, and, and Mr. Brett Hamilton is gonna present this and we'll let you listen and, and then if you have any comments, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Brett.
All right, thank you. All right. So uh, as was presented, it is for uh, two off-premise advertising signs. So essentially billboards. Uh, the off-premise advertising is just essentially the title that is given in the code, uh, both uh, for the county and for, uh, for UDOT. Uh, so this just kinda gives a general location of the proposed signs. The location of the site uh, is just below Hamilton Fort. Uh, so this is zoomed in here a little bit. It's a, a small commercial property right around one acre. Uh, currently it is the uh, Hamilton Fort Storage Units. You'll see them as you're just driving down I fifteen. So that's the location of the site. So this just gives a little bit of the land ownership that's surrounding it. You can kinda see that there's some Paiute tribal lands directly to the, the south. And then you've got the, the Cedar City Municipal Boundary, about half mile to the north of this proposed site. So zoning on the property, it is commercial. Uh, there is some commercial further up the, to the north on I fifteen as well surrounded by R one and A twenty. Uh, so the site is, is just along Old Highway ninety-one. Uh, so that's generally the, the location or address that the site's given, uh, as you can see here. So the section of the code seventeen fifty-two oh twenty, there is a section that just gives these ten criteria uh, for these off-premise advertising signs. So we've reviewed the application uh, to ensure that it meets those ten requirements, which it does. Uh, some of the ones that, uh, you know, we'll highlight, I guess, real quick as it talks about the maximum square foot. we'll highlight, I guess, real quick, as it talks about the maximum square footage. The code limits at 700 square feet. They're at 672. So it's a 14-foot tall by 48-foot wide billboard sign. Can be double-faced, which they do propose to have. It can be illuminated, which it will be. And then also, one thing that I'll just point out that's one of these criterias is the height. So on these exhibits that you'll see here, it does show a 40-foot overall height. But Weston Saunders, he's confirmed that they will lower it to 35 to be in compliance with, with our code. So that's one of the changes that they'll make when they resubmit for their building permit. They've already submitted for the building permit. They were directed back to us so that we could bring it forward to the county commission for approval before, you know, we move forward with any sort of building permit. So again, this is just a site plan showing that Hamilton Fort Storage. They've got one located on the north end, one on the south end. Code requires that they be at least 500 feet apart when they're adjacent to the freeway, which of course they are here. So these two signs on this site would be about 525 feet apart. It also requires a 500-foot separation between any other existing billboard, which this shows that they are. The one to the north is 1.3 miles. That's probably maybe the last one that the county commission has seen, there at the Zip Kit Homes. So that was about five years ago, I think, that that was approved. And then another one a little bit further to the south. But again, that one's at least over 1,400 feet away. So they're in compliance with those separation requirements. There are two different designs that are shown here, one with the pole being centralized on the sign and one off to the side. With the two signs, I believe, and Weston could maybe confirm, but I believe it was the, this one here, where the pole's off to the side. They're kind of coordinating and trying to work with the property owner. The property owner would prefer this design here, because it would just push that sign a little bit closer to the side, so that there's less interference with any of the site operations versus having the pole kind of right in the center of the side. So I think this is the design that they're, they're wanting to go a little more towards. So we took this to the planning commission. The planning commission did recommend approval. So we've, we've got it here for you. And then, of course, the findings, it's really just those 10 criteria that are listed there in the code section. But that's the end of presentation, and here for any questions.
Mr. Saunders, do you have any, any comments?
Yeah, I'll just confirm what he just said. That one design with the pole off to the side is called a flag design. And usually, that's used in a situation where there's, you know, onsite traffic or operations that a pole would interfere with. So we've, we've agreed to, to do that design to help eliminate any issues with traffic. Other than that, everything was, yeah. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
And then the, lower on it, 35 feet from 40?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. All right, I don't have any.
I don't have any questions.
I'm good.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll go ahead, and I assume you're watching online, Mr. Saunders, and we'll, we'll go ahead and let you go.
I am.
And thank you for your participation today. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You bet. We'll see you. Bye. Good luck. All right. So there's no other discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, for approval of two proposed off-premise advertising signs located at 3035 South Old Highway 91, approximately .99 acres.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to personnel. Jennifer, let you go ahead and cover this.
Thank you. Good morning.
You got a whole bunch here.
Yes. You should have brought your stamp today. I apologize. I should have told you.
See you, guys.
All right. In the Children's Justice Center, Nick Hewlett was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant, full-time CJC director position. Nick will be an appointed career service exempt salaried employee effective 9/15/2025. In the assessors department, DMV, Sidney Harrison was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant, full-time Cedar City DMV technician position effective 9/29/2025. In the attorney's office, Hannah Dockery was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant, part-time legal assistant position effective 9/2 of 2025. In the landfill, I've got three. So Riley Bess, Jeff Rexroad, and Jason Ward were all selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant, full-time landfill technician positions, effective for Jason and Riley will be effective 9/29/2025. And if for Jeff, it will be effective 9/15/2025. And then in the road department, Kobe Bronson was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant, full-time maintenance technician one position, effective 9/15/2025. In the fleet department, Jose Jimenez was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant, full-time automotive technician one position, effective 9/15/2025. In the council on aging department, William Duncan was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant, part-time, Mills on Wheels driver position. This will be in the Parowan office, effective 9/3 of 2025. And last but not least, in the parks and recreation department, Brooke Zemp was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant, part-time, seasonal recreational technician position, effective 8/25/2025.
Any questions on any of those?
No.
Nope. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of personnel items one through eight, as described by Jennifer.
Second that motion.
It moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I wanted to mention, so last week, my son hired a, an employee from a temporary service, employment service here in Cedar City. And when I talked to him, I just asked him how many people they had looking for work, and they said that they had a lot. And they had CDL drivers, they had equipment operators, they had a lot of things. And I, and I, without stepping on your toes, Ken, I just, I just asked Jennifer, I said, hey, could we as a county, where Bruce is, like, Bruce in particular is hurting for employees, if we could hire as a county from a temp agency? And I believe you said yes.
We have been.
And that's, to me, that's an awesome way to go, because you can, you can use that individual for one day, and if you don't like him, you say, you call him and say, don't send him back. Or if you love him, you can buy their contract out and hire him full-time. So that's just another option that we could look at.
Yeah.
For employees.
That meet all the requirements that you need to...
Well, and we, we have, this is kind of out of the box thinking. We haven't really done it until this last year. And I think it was Bruce that kind of brought it to our attention, and has been utilizing those services, I believe, this year.
Said he used some for flaggers.
Flaggers, yes, correct.
But, but...
But not for CDLs as of yet.
Sound like there's some more.
What about the CDL?
CDL, as long as we...
All different.
It is. And as long as we have the copy of the CDL, and we can do a check for active and no errors and that kind of thing. And as long as they pass our background check, we're good to go. So I don't have a problem with that at all. And we can do that relatively quickly.
I didn't know what you two think about that. I just...
I know. Whatever we can do to fill those holes.
Yeah, to fill those positions. And I mean, we're looking, you know, with the situation at the jail, they're begging us to have somebody come and empty their dumpsters. And we just don't have the, we just don't have the employees to do it. So they're going to start looking out of county service to accommodate that.
Yeah, love it.
Anyway, so...
Yeah, it's always good to kind of learn new ways to make it better, for sure.
Outside the box a little bit on that one, maybe.
Absolutely.
Find some people that are looking for work, and we're looking for out.
Exactly. Win-win.
So, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Is there any other, thank you?
I'm Jennifer. CJC Nick Hewlett. How old is he?
Gosh, that's a great question. I would probably say mid-40s, maybe?
It's not, yeah, I bet, I bet not. So I met him inadvertently. And I ran into him again at your office the other day. When I was, when you weren't there, I was talking to Betsy, and he came in. So his background, he's been an assistant principal in a, in a charter school in Vegas for about 23 years. So not, his family's originally, and still has lots of family in Parowan and Paragona. He lives in Parowan.
And I think he just barely moved back within the past six months to a year.
Something.
From Vegas, something like that.
Yeah. So he, I actually got a call for, to do VIN inspections, for, because they'd, they'd moved up from Vegas, and so I'm doing these VIN inspections. They were super nice. I don't, I don't even know where, I don't know how this, it changed, but he said, oh, I just got hired as the new director for the Children's Justice Center. I said, well, I'll be dipped. Let me introduce myself in my other hat.
That's right.
Take off my cop hat for a minute. And anyway, we had a really good conversation. I, I think he's going to be great.
Yeah.
He's got a, he's got a really great background with administration and...
And he's also, if I'm not mistaken, he's a CSW, he's got a, some sort of a...
Some sort of a, some letters behind his name?
He's got certifications.
No, he was, he was great. And then I talked to him for a minute. He came into HR to do work, do his paperwork and stuff. And I just, he seems like a, just a really good guy, really solid, so...
Yeah. Good.
Very good. Okay, there you go. That's, I challenge Alma Adams on those signatures. You can't read them. Any, any other things, boards, or, I think I asked that, but I think we're good. So...
I don't have anything.
Chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you.